Testing. Okay, good evening everyone. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, August 12th, at the Apponequit Regional High School Auditorium. First agenda item is continuing the Simmons Hill, formerly known as Rocky Hill, hearing. What we want to do tonight is, we had a presentation in regards to traffic impacts by the petitioner at the last meeting, and we are now, who've had our peer reviewer on behalf of the town review that, and we're going to have him let us know his results. I'm going to call him up in one second, but what I would just like to remind everyone the role that we have here in regards to the impact on traffic. So if Town Council could just remind us what we're supposed to be looking at.
Sure, thank you, Amy Questle, Town Council. We are looking at the impact of, the impact the development has on surrounding roadways. So unfortunately, we cannot, we cannot require the developer to improve existing infrastructure, and we also can't require the developer to even fix existing infrastructure. So the, what we're here for is to make sure that this development does not have a negative effect with regard to safety.
Okay, thank you. So Jeff Durk, who is going to present on behalf of the town, the findings of the traffic study that was presented, I'm going to have him come up right now, or actually not all the way up, because as you can see, we're very limited for space here. He's going to be at the foot of the stage here, and he's going to tell us his findings and recommendations.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll have the back to the board, so I apologize, and I'll face the audience. So again, thank you and good evening. By way of introduction, as the chairman had mentioned, my name is Jeffrey Durk. I'm the managing partner with Veresen Associates, and we are the town's transportation peer review consultant for the project. And I think, as you heard, and council and the chairman may have mentioned, kind of what the role of the peer reviewer is as we take a look at this project. And again, we're working on behalf of the town and behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and what our role is... Oh, great, thank you, thank you very much. What the role of the peer reviewer is, is to look at the documents that have been submitted to the town, and the first thing that we do is make sure that they comply with industry standards. So as a transportation professional, there's a series of standards that we follow in preparing transportation impact assessments, and I think as you heard council mention, what the goal of that impact assessment is, is to measure the impact of the project on the transportation infrastructure. And as it relates to a comprehensive permit project, what's important, important to you but as well as to the board, is to make sure that the project can be constructed in a safe manner. And that's kind of the critical thing, is typical of, as you're looking at water, sewer, and other types of facilities, and the transportation infrastructure being one of those. The presumption is that there needs to be capacity, or that adequate capacity is provided by those infrastructure features, so transportation being the roadway network itself. However, the access to the project and the way the project is constructed and the impacts can't cause an adverse safety impact on the roadway network. So as we're looking at it, we're checking all of the facts and figures and the analyses that the applicant has submitted, making sure it was done in accordance with those standards, standards of the profession, as well as in the case of the transportation study, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation sets standards that have to be followed in conducting the traffic study. So that's the first thing we do, is make sure that what's been presented to the town complies with those standards and accepted practices. Then we look at what the impact of the project is. So as it relates to transportation, we're looking at how much additional traffic is the project going to add to the roadways that provide access to the project site, and then looking at how that added traffic impacts the roadway. So as you're driving along Freeport Street, or Freetown Street, and you're coming up to County Street, or down to Howland here, you know, if you're having backups or delays at these intersections, if there's 10 cars backed up at an intersection before the project's built, how many more cars are going to be backed up? And how much additional time are you going to wait at an intersection as a result of this project? And we try to look at specific measures that could be done at the intersection to improve those conditions that are commensurate with the impact of the project at those locations. So we're looking at the impacts as they defined it, and looking at what they've proposed for potential improvements on the transportation infrastructure. So I'm reviewing the traffic study, but I'm also reviewing the site plan. And as I look at the site plan, what I'm looking at is the typical things that you'd think we would look at from a transportation perspective. Is the road wide enough? Are there sidewalks? Can a fire truck get into the project? And can it maneuver on the roadway network? And some places where we have called a Saks, can that truck turn at those locations? So we're looking at all of those features. And again, the primary thing that we're looking at is safety. So we need to make sure that if a resident moves into the new project there, can a fire truck, can safe access, can safety be provided in there to the extent that there's an emergency and a fire truck needs to get in there? So those are all the things that we're looking at as a part of the project. So I did have a chance to review the transportation study. I know the applicant had made a presentation to you at the last meeting. So my presentation tonight is going to be our comments as it relates to the document that's been prepared. So as I mentioned, the first part of our review is to make sure that the document was prepared in accordance with standard practices, and we have confirmed that. So the way, the methodology that was used to conduct the transportation analysis is what we would expect for a traffic study for a project of this size. And I know there's been some comments and questions that were asked by the audience that the chair has passed along with, to me, so I'm going to, I'm going to respond to some of those questions at the end of the presentation. Some of those may be answered as a part of my presentation itself. So the first thing that's asked is the study area. So as the applicant undertook their analysis, there were specific roadways and intersections that they evaluated in terms of the project's impact. And one of the first things we're always asked is, well, how did they determine which intersections to look at? So the study area that the applicant had looked at is the Freetown Street corridor from Howland Road to County Street, and then the intersections at both ends of Freetown Street. And then they also looked at the Route 140 interchange. Now, the definition of, you know, what does the study area need to encompass, how far out from the project site do you go? It's really determined based on the amount of net new traffic the project's going to generate. So as the applicant had presented to you at the last hearing, the project's going to generate somewhere between 110 to 136 peak hour vehicle trips. So when you think about you driving in the morning, going to work, or maybe dropping a child off here at school during the morning time period, and then you think about in the evening, when you might be coming home from work, or if you have someone who might be leaving the high school here and would be traveling home, those are the peak time periods they're looking at as a part of the project and seeing what the impacts are. So that's when the project's going to generate somewhere between 110 to 136 vehicle trips during a one-hour period. The study area, or how many intersections, or the scope of the area that they look at, what is determined, or the Department of Transportation has defined as what your minimum study area needs to be, it's any location where the project will increase traffic by 5% or more during those peak time periods. Or that the project will add more than 100 vehicles to that intersection, or to any specific intersection, over a one-hour period. So you can see from the project, it generates 110 to 136 peak hour vehicle trips. So the study area that they've looked at complies with those standards. When you get outside of that study area, it doesn't mean that the project's not going to have an impact. I mean, clearly, they're adding traffic to additional roadways away from the site beyond that area. But as you measure the impact of the project versus what you see out there today, the reason that study area is defined the way that it is, is because the added traffic is not something where, if you looked at conditions today versus conditions in the future with the project constructed, delays would go a little, up a little bit, but it's not something that's going to be perceivable, or would impact conditions to the extent that additional improvements might be needed directly as a result of the project. So that's how that study area was defined, and I know that was a question of why didn't they look any further than these specific roadways or intersections? But it's compliant with those standards. So we've checked that and ensured that that was in fact the case as it relates to the development itself. So the next thing that the applicant undertakes is, they need to go out and do traffic counts at these roadways and at specific intersections, or the intersections that I had just mentioned. So as we're looking at the way that they undertake their data collection, we're making sure, again, it was done in accordance with standard practices, but we're also looking at the data to make sure, a couple of things, that it was collected properly. So as we look at the, what I think is referred to as the count logs, with the detailed traffic counts, we look to make sure that it's showing consistent flow of traffic, that we don't have specific time periods where all of a sudden the traffic drops down to zero, or things like that, that would indicate that there was something wrong, or something might be going on that would cause the data to be erroneous and may need to be collected or recollected. So there's two types of traffic counts that the, you measure in a traffic study. The first thing is, on Freetown Street, we want to understand not just traffic flow during those peak time periods that we're talking about, but we want to see how traffic flows over the entirety of the day. So the applicant undertakes what's known as automatic traffic recorder counts. So what they do is they measure the volume and speed of traffic on Freetown Street, and they do it over a two-day period. So you typically will see these rubber road tubes across the street, and those are what, those are automatic traffic recorder counts. And what those do is they measure traffic volumes on a roadway over an extended time period. They also, in the case of the project, you want to measure travel speeds. So the applicant did undertake those types of measurements on Freetown Street, and that each of the intersections at either end of Freetown Street, as well as at the Route 140 interchange, they also perform peak period turning movement counts. So a turning movement count is, you count not only how many vehicles are going through an intersection, but you're also looking at how many cars turn left, turn right, or go straight through an intersection. And you do those traffic counts during distinct time periods of the day. For a residential project, you want to look at typically when people are going to work in the morning, and when they're coming home in the evening. And you bracket that time period, and typically in the morning, it's 7 to 9:00 in the morning, that's when you can think about people dropping children off at school, or if you're commuting to work, that's generally when you'd be traveling. And then the same type of traffic counts are done in the evening. The bracketed time period is between 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening, and that's traditionally when the traffic volumes would be at their highest level. So the applicant undertook both of those types of traffic counts. So Freetown Street, they measured volume and speed of traffic over a two-day time period on a weekday, and then they also performed those turning movement counts at each of the intersections. So as I mentioned, as we're looking at the traffic counts that the data, that the applicant had provided, we look at two things as it relates to the data, not only that it was collected properly, but what we look at is those daily traffic counts on Freetown Street. And what we want to make sure of is, again, if we're bracketing 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening at the intersections, one of the things that those daily traffic counts allow us to see is, did they in fact capture the peak hour of the roadway? Because we want to make sure that what they're analyzing is the highest volume of traffic on the roadway during any specific time period. So as we're sitting here in this auditorium, clearly there's a high school down here. This school influences the peak periods of the traffic count. So seven, what we found in looking at the data, and this was our, our first comment, is the morning time period, 7:00 to 9:00, it captures the peak period in the morning. Traffic flows on the roadways, as well as associated with the school, are, they peaked during that time period, so that's appropriate. But as you look at the afternoon time period between 4:00 and 6:00, when we look at the volume of traffic on Freetown Street, the peak hour actually occurs before 4:00. So there is a peak that happens somewhere between 3, 3:00 and 4:30, let's say, where the traffic on the roadway is actually higher than it is during 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening. 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening is actually a little bit lower than somewhere between 3:00 and 4:00 in the afternoon. So what we've said to the applicant is, they need to go and look at what we're calling the school peak period, because the school peak period in the afternoon is higher than the commuter peak hour. So we want to understand what the impacts of the project may be when school-related traffic is on Freetown Street and going through each of the intersections. So we've asked them to go back and undertake some analysis as it relates to the school peak period as well, so I believe the applicant is undertaking that analysis. The other thing that we look at is, as I mentioned, safety being kind of the critical piece of our analysis, or what we're evaluating as a part of the project. So from a safety perspective, we're looking at speed of traffic on the roadways, but we're also looking at motor vehicle crashes. So as a part of a transportation analysis, at each of the intersections that you study, you also look at the number of crashes that are happening at those intersections, and we look at the number of crashes over a five-year time period to try to remove any variability. Let's say if there was a construction project going on one year, and then it wasn't going on the next year, those types of things will have influences or impacts in terms of not only traffic flow, but crashes at intersections. So as we look at kind of a longer range time period, it allows us to kind of remove some of that variability. So the motor vehicle safety analysis, or the crash analysis that's done, what we're doing is, we're looking at the number of motor vehicles that are occurring at the intersection. It's assessed based on the, a metric of per million vehicles going through the intersection. So we normalize the crashes, rather than just saying it's an average of four crashes per year, that doesn't allow us to compare crashes at specific intersections to, say, other intersections in the town. But by using a motor vehicle crash rate, which is number of crashes that are occurring per million vehicles going through an intersection, it allows us to be able to compare crashes at intersections to other intersections in the town, as well as in the state as a whole. So the applicant undertook that analysis, compared the number of crashes per million vehicles going through each of the intersections, and compared that to state averages. What was found as a part of that analysis is, the intersection actually out here, at the Freetown Street, Howland Road intersection, the number of crashes occurring at that intersection is actually, it's equal to the average number of crashes that would be expected at an intersection, not above it, but it's equal to it. So it's kind of right at that limit, where if you had a few more crashes, it would kick it over into being higher than the state average. The intersection of County Street at the Route 140 North Bond ramps, the crash, crash rate at that intersection is higher than the state average. So as a part of our assessment, we've asked the applicant not only to reevaluate those crashes, or the crash rates at those intersections based on the school peak hours, but we've also asked that because the crashes at this intersection, as well as up at the interchange exceed the state average, or equal to the state average, they need to investigate what improvements could be done at those intersections. So we've asked them to go back, come back with some more information in terms of looking at what's happening, what is causing the crashes, and then what are some potential remedial measures that can be implemented at those intersections to address the crashes that are occurring. And again, as we're doing our evaluation for a comprehensive permit project, there's never a situation where we want to be adding more traffic to an intersection that's unsafe. So we want to make sure that we're addressing any safety implications, and making sure that there's specific improvements that can be done that are proportionate to the impact of the project. So I think that's the key thing. Rebuilding or reconstructing interchanges is not something that's proportionate to the impact of the project, but there's certainly some things that can be done to address the crashes that are happening at the intersection, and we've asked the applicant to undertake an evaluation of that. As I mentioned, in terms of looking at the potential impact of the project, when we're looking at impacts of the project, we're not only looking at the existing conditions we described, but what we're required to do is look at a seven-year planning horizon. So the state has determined that if you're assessing projects' impacts, the seven-year planning horizon allows for a project such as this to go through this process. So if they have, say, a year of permitting or such that they need to get through, they get through that permitting process, they probably have another year to get the project up and running and start some construction, so that's two years in. And then we're looking five years, five years in the future to ensure that when the project's built, occupied, and has some traffic added onto the roadway network, if there are specific improvements that are proposed and constructed as a part of the project itself, we want to make sure that they have some life, that they don't, they not only operate well when the project is constructed, but that there's life to it, so that we're not at capacity at two years into the future, but that if we're looking at seven years in the future, projects is built, added traffic, improvements are constructed, and then there's some life to those. So there's some additional capacity that's created, so that as the town looks at infrastructure improvements in the area, that there's actually, these improvements will substantiate or support additional development in the area itself. So that's where that seven-year planning horizon is established. So the applicant has estimated what traffic volumes will look like in the future with and without the project. So they're looking at the year 2031 without the project, and then they're looking at the year 2031 with the project. And the comparison between those two, so 2031 without the project, if you look through the traffic study, it's called the no-build condition, so the project's not constructed. The 2031 conditions with the project is the build condition. So if you look at the traffic study, and they have a table in there showing delays and queuing and such at intersections, when you compare the no-build to the build, you'll see where the impacts of the project are experienced at specific intersections. So as they undertook that analysis, and again, we've looked at the trip projections, so that 110 peak hour trips, the 136 additional trips the project's expected to generate, and we agree with the methodology that was used to estimate that amount of traffic, it follows standard practice, and we've checked those results. We also looked at how do they assign the traffic onto the roadway network? So as traffic is coming and going from the project site, some of it's heading to the north, some of it's heading to the south, and there's a methodology used to determine what that distribution of traffic will be, and we've undertaken that review of the applicant's information, and we do agree with that. So looking at the impact of the project itself, where the most pronounced impacts are, is up at the County Street intersection. So where Freetown Street, County Street intersection is, that's a location that is currently, it operates over capacity, and probably many of you know that, especially during the evening time period. So if you're coming up to that intersection, and you're at the stop sign, and you want to go left or right there, there's generally a backup of vehicles there that can be quite substantial based on the analysis that the applicant has undertaken. Clearly, if you don't make any improvements at that intersection, it's not going to get any better. So what they're showing is that the backup of cars at that intersection will, will grow, obviously, with the addition of the traffic from the project. So the applicant has proposed some recommendations up there. So what they may have shown you, a plan that shows a reconstruction of that intersection. What it would be is widening Freetown Street within the public right-of-way, so there's no land acquisition required. This can all be built within property that's owned by the town, with permission from the town. So that as you come up to the intersection, what you'd have is separate turning lanes, so a left turn lane, a right turn lane. And then if you're heading towards Route 140 and County Street, there would be a separate right-hand turn to head down Freetown Street. So that will actually help with the traffic that's flowing down here towards the highs, toward the high school itself. So they've, oh, thank you. So this is the, what they proposed undertake as a part of the project, and again, as you look at this plan, all of these, all of the widening that you see of the roadway would all happen within the town's property, so there's not a need to acquire private property to undertake this improvement. So this improvement with the applicant's additional traffic does result in an improvement in traffic flow at that intersection. So delays will be reduced, and the backup that's occurring at the intersection would be reduced as well. One of the questions was asked, as you look at this, is whether or not a traffic signal, a traffic signal could be installed at this intersection. A traffic signal actually could not be installed at this intersection because of the fact that it doesn't meet specific traffic volume criteria. So the, the state, and actually the Federal Highway Administration sets specific criteria that have to be met to install a traffic signal. And there's nine criteria that are established, they're called warrants. You must meet at least one of those warrants in order to install a traffic signal. If you do not meet a warrant, you cannot install a traffic signal, it's not an option. And looking at this location, it doesn't meet any of those nine criteria, so we did look at that. The applicant has proposed what's known as always stop, so it's similar to the intersection that you have here in front of the high school, so that all movements at the intersection would stop. We've asked that the applicant undertake an evaluation of the always stop control, because there are, similar to a traffic signal, you can't just stop traffic on all of the legs of an intersection, you have to do an evaluation to make sure that it meets the specific criteria. Because what would happen here, as you're looking at it, although this might make the traffic from Freetown Street flow better, the backups that would happen on County Street might offset any net benefit to Freetown Street. So what needs to be looked at is the volume of traffic on each of these approaches, to make sure that in fact this is a good traffic control solution at the intersection, but this is not a location that would support the installation of a traffic signal, it doesn't come close to meeting the criteria that would necessitate, necessitate that. Could you call up the site plan? I'm sorry, if he's, yep, perfect, thank you. So the other thing that we're looking at as it relates to the traffic study, and this will relate to the site plan itself, is the two intersections where the access into the project site will occur. So what the applicant has undertaken, as I mentioned, as they're measuring the volume of traffic along Freetown Street, they're also measuring the speed of traffic along that roadway. And the reason that they're doing that is so that they can look at the sightlines at these intersections. So if you're a motorist driving along Freetown Street, and someone pulled out of the driveway and their vehicle stalled right in the middle of the road, you need to be able to see that vehicle if you're driving along the road and stop without striking, striking it. The other measurement that's undertaken is, when the road is built and you're looking to the left or right, you need to be able to see a vehicle that's traveling along Freetown Street and be able to exit the project safely, so that you can make a left or right-hand turn. And you can do that by being able to see a vehicle that's approaching you. So they're looking at lines of sight at the intersections. So the applicant had undertaken that analysis as a part of their impact assessment, and the importance of the travel speeds is that they need to make sure that they're assessing those sightlines not based on the posted speed limit, but based on the speed that motor, voters are actually driving along that roadway. So the posted speed limit, I believe, is 30, 35 miles an hour on that road. As they're looking at the speed of traffic that people are actually driving on that roadway, the majority of the vehicles are generally driving somewhere between 46 and 49 miles an hour, so they're getting pretty close to 50 miles an hour on that road. So when they're assessing the sightlines, the sightlines need to be appropriate, not for 35 miles an hour, but for the speed that they actually measured on the roadway. So you need to be able to see, based on someone approaching between 46 and 49 miles an hour along that roadway itself. So they have undertaken that assessment, and what that assessment shows is, the sightlines do meet the minimum criteria for safe operation based on those speeds, 46 to 49 miles an hour. However, what we've asked the applicant to do because of, you know, it's a, I'll describe, it's a, it's a very nice tree-lined roadway with vegetation. As you see on the plan here, we have some curves that are occurring in the roadway itself. So as we're looking at those sightlines, what's important, I think, for us to understand, the zoning board to understand, as well as, as you as residents, is how much vegetation clearing needs to take place in order to attain those sightlines, and where does it occur? So we've asked the applicant to prepare what's known as a sight triangle plan. And what these plans will show, it's actually a diagram of each of these intersections, and I describe those sight, sight distances, the two types of sight measurements that we undertake. So what the sight triangle will do, it will actually position a driver exiting the project, and then the sightlines will be drawn out toward Freetown Street. So if you're a motorist exiting, you look to the left, you look to the right into Freetown Street, and that creates a triangle. So the triangle is basically the driver's eye out to Freetown Street, and then straight across at the intersection, and that's done in both directions. That sight triangle is the clear zone. So within the triangles that you see, you cannot have an object in that triangle area that would obscure your sightlines. So what we want to understand is, are there any trees or vegetation in those sight triangle areas that need to be cleared in order to attain those sightlines? So we've asked the applicant to prepare those diagrams, so that we can review those on behalf of the town, and make sure, I think importantly, that those sight triangles lie entirely within the applicant's property, or within the town right-of-way. If it goes onto private property, then that's something that they would need to have a discussion, to the extent that there is a tree or an object in private property that needs to be removed, you know, that property owner, they need to have discussions, or a modification needs to be made with, to the plan. So that's why those sight triangles are important to be shown. So we've asked that the applicant provide that information to us. Lastly, in terms of our review of the traffic study, as I mentioned, we do have some recommendations that we've asked the applicant to go back and take a look at. And probably most importantly is looking at those safety improvements at the Freetown Street Highland Road intersection, as well as at the County Street, Route 140 intersection. We've also asked that the applicant consider some refinements to that concept plan at the Freetown Street, County Street intersection. Specifically, if you do look at that plan, as I mentioned, they're providing, as you're heading toward 140, there's a right turn lane that's being carved into, it's on the south side of the roadway. So when you're installing stop signs, if you picture there's a right turn lane on the right-hand side, if, if there were always stop at that intersection, that stop sign, if you're traveling straight through the intersection, is going to be so far to your right that it's really not going to be in your, in your cone of vision, so your peripheral vision, because it's too far off to the right-hand side. So to the extent that that improvement is something that's undertaken as a part of the project, what we're suggesting is that there would need to be some type of a flashing beacon or something at that intersection, just given the fact that that stop sign is not, it's not positioned in a way that it's going to be directly in the driver's line of sight. of sight, and we obviously don't want to create additional safety implications as a result of some improvements that should be done at that location, so we've asked that the applicant take a look at that. Lastly, in terms of our initial recommendations based on the information that was provided, we did ask that the applicant look at whether it's feasible to implement what's known as a transportation demand management plan. So there is not public transportation services currently provided in this area that the residents would have an opportunity to use in order to reduce automobile trips, however, there is a benefit to letting people know where is the closest MBTA station, to the extent, you know, we have new residents living here, making them sure, making sure that they're aware of what transportation resources may be available to them. This includes services by the council on aging as well, so just making sure that that information is made available to them. So we've asked that to the extent that there's a homeowners association, these are the type of things that can be provided to residents, may not reduce the volume of traffic that's produced by the project, but as we look at it from a regional perspective, if someone does ride the commuter rail, it generally, you know, it'll improve traffic on Route 140 and some of the more regional roadways. So with the rain kind of breaking that part of my presentation up, that's the conclusion of our review of the traffic study. The applicant has our comments as it relates to the traffic study, so we're going to review the new information that comes in. We will then have a subsequent letter that addresses any comments or raises any comments or questions that we might have on the new information that the applicant's going to be submitting. I think importantly, that new information is going to relate to, again, the school-related traffic and how the project would impact those conditions. So the next set of comments we have relate to the site plan, so I'm going to point out a couple of things as we look at the site plan that's before you. As you look at the plan itself, you can see there's two roadways that come in off of Freetown Street, and then we have a roadway network within the project itself. What we've asked the applicant to do is prepare a sign and pavement marking plan for the project, so that we can understand where stop signs are proposed or make sure that stop signs are installed at appropriate locations within the project site. So a separate plan would allow us to be able to understand traffic flow and circulation within the project. The other thing that we've asked the applicant to provide is a vehicle turning analysis. So as I mentioned, as we're looking at the project site itself and its circulation, the most important thing is a fire truck can get in and out of the project, so we need to make sure that the intersections, as they're designed with Freetown Street and the corner radii here, are sufficient to allow the fire truck to turn in and turn out and stay within the paved area, so we don't want them to have to drive outside of the paved surface. So that turning diagram is required for us to be able to make sure that that can in fact take place. The same thing within the project site, so as the vehicle is entering the site, we need to make sure it can turn at these intersections as well as circumnavigate the cul-de-sac. So as the fire truck gets to the end here, it needs to be able to turn around on that cul-de-sac and then exit back out from the project site. So that turning diagram is going to allow us to make sure that all of those maneuvers can happen. That's important because as we look at the width of the roadway, I believe it's going to be 22 feet wide or that's what's recommended. So 22 feet is fine for two-way traffic, but as we're looking at the intersections, sometimes that width is not sufficient to have those vehicles actually make the turning maneuvers at the intersections, and so you either need a wider road or the radii here need to get larger in order for the vehicles to make those maneuvers. So understanding all of that relates to the positioning of the houses and the number of units that are within the project site. So as you look at maneuverability, that starts to define how close some of these homes may be to intersections and whether things need to get spread out a little bit more to make all of that work within the project site. So we've asked the applicant to undertake that analysis itself. The other thing as it relates to roadway width, generally when you have a roadway width that's less than 24 feet, you can't have on-street parking, and the reason for that is that the fire code specifies that a minimum clear width of 20 feet needs to be provided for emergency vehicles or for emergency operations. The 20-foot clear is made so that when you have an emergency, so if there's a fire event, there's three vehicles that are going to arrive, there's a fire truck, the ambulance, and a police car at a minimum are going to arrive. And so if you picture a fire truck pulling up next to one of the residences, and then the ambulance comes, they need to be able to get around that fire truck, and then the police car needs to get around those vehicles. So the 20-foot clear allows the fire truck to get up against the edge of the traveled way so that they can be fighting the fire, and then those other vehicles can arrive and get by that fire truck. So as we're looking at a roadway that is 22 feet, if you start to have vehicles parking on the road, you don't end up with a 20-foot clear. So there's two things that's important, two things that are important about that. The first thing is no on-street parking, so we've said to the applicant that to the extent that we're talking about 22-foot wide roadways, then you can't really have vehicles parking on the street, especially in the single-family portion of them. So that's the first thing. The second thing is you need adequate off-street parking. So one of the things that we've asked as it relates to parking in the site plan is to identify how many parking spaces are proposed on a per-unit basis, and preferably single-family homes, what's the parking ratio for the single-family homes, the parking ratio for the condos, and then the parking ratio for the duplexes, because again, we want to make sure that there's adequate parking for the residents as well as any guests that may be there, because if we're 22 feet, no on-street parking, and we need to make sure that we have the ability of emergency vehicles to get by on the roadways. And again, the 20-foot clear is the minimum dimension, although the fire chief can waive that, so they could weigh in as they look at the turning analyses as well. So another area that we've asked some review to be undertaken is up here, there's a male kiosk showing, male, male kiosk at this location here with a cul-de-sac that you see here. So we've asked that they look at that just to make sure vehicles maneuver, but this really should just be one-way circulation, preferably in a counterclockwise direction, so vehicles, if you're coming back, you'd loop around that area. So we want to make sure that that's put in place, that the appropriate signs and pavement markings, and that that one-way traffic flow works in that area. The other thing that's important is we're looking at the roadway network and speaking about vehicle maneuvering. At some point, the applicant should have a discussion with the school department, with the school department to look at how children would be picked up by a school bus. If the school bus is not going to come into the project site, then the schoolchildren will need to walk to Freetown Street and be picked up at a bus stop at that location. So to the extent that the buses do not come into the project site and the children need to walk out to Freetown Street to be picked up from a bus, as we all know, the children aren't necessarily, or the parents aren't going to let the children walk all the way back into the development, especially the depth of the site that we have here. So probably like you see at most bus stops, all of the parents or majority of them will park down at the end of the street, wait for the kids to get dropped off from the bus or wait out there for them to get picked up by the bus. And so those type of accommodations need to be considered at the end of the roadways, and again, because we're talking about 22-foot wide roadways, if we have children waiting at the end of the street and then we have parent vehicles queued up, waiting for the bus to come, there's not enough room for maneuvering down at the end of the street. So some thought needs to be given to how do we deal with school buses at the end of the road or to make sure the school department is going to run buses within the project site, so we need to know that as well. So you can see that the vehicle turning analysis, the issue of the school buses and how that's going to operate within the project site itself, looking at on-street parking, all of these are going to have implications in terms of the layout of the project. So we think from the standpoint of looking at the site plan, these are just kind of some base, baseline things that need to be understood because they'll also affect the traffic analysis. So even though, you know, not, it is directly related, because if the number of units changes, it also changes the traffic analysis as it relates to the project. The other thing is we're looking at Freetown Street, because I know this came up as a question, the applicant is building sidewalks within the project, but there are not sidewalks along Freetown Street. So we did point out again, as we're looking at safety, we have vehicles, the majority of vehicles going 46 to 49 miles an hour on Freetown Street, and yet there's not sidewalks out there, so I think that's an important thing that needs to be reviewed as well, and this does not have to do with the applicant's project, so it's just a consideration as we're looking at it. But the consideration also deals with the fact is we're looking at motor vehicle crashes, we looked at the intersections, but we didn't look at what's happening along Freetown Street. So we've captured what happens at either end, but as it relates to the roadway itself, if we have vehicles traveling at 49 miles an hour, which is the higher speed that they measured on the roadway, as we look at the curves and kind of the dips, so the vertical curves as well as the horizontal curves, many of those are not designed for 49 miles an hour. So if you're driving into those curves at 49 miles an hour, you're not going to see someone that might be pulling out of the driveways, or you might not see someone who's coming in the other direction on the roadway. So those are things that need to be considered, and the best way to look at how that impacts the roadway is to look at the crashes along the roadway itself, not just at the intersections. So that's another piece, it relates to the site plan, it relates to the driveways, but it also relates to just general safety on the roadway. So we've asked that the applicant undertake that analysis, and that will be a part of their subsequent review. I think that is it with respect to our review. You can see we've asked the applicant to undertake some more homework, and each of those homework assignments, and again, I know that they're working on that, will impact not only the transportation analysis that's been undertaken, but also the layout of the site plan itself, and those two things are going to be related, but hopefully that'll produce some more information and answer some of the questions that we had, but as well as some of the questions that you had as well, being residents in the area. So Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to go to questions or the questions you've posed to me?
Yeah, a couple of points first, maybe one clarification, if you wouldn't mind commenting, only because I know it's been brought up. Obviously, you're the peer reviewer working on the town's part, and they have their own traffic study that they provided to us. So in your opinion, you know, I guess the question really is, is their traffic study credible? Is the data used credible? If you could comment on, if there's anything that, other than the fact that there, obviously there's a question as to whether developments you're going or not, that's up for us to answer, but the study and the information that was provided, in your professional opinion, could you comment on it?
Yes, so I think as I had mentioned at the outset, the traffic study complies with not only industry standards but also Mass. Department of Transportation standards, so it meets all of the required criteria, and I think using your terminology, yes, it's credible. The traffic study was prepared by a professional engineer and stamped by a professional engineer, I'm also a professional engineer reviewing their work. It meets all of those, the standards, it's what I would expect for a traffic study of this size, and I would also suggest that the comments that we've raised and the questions we've raised are things that I would expect and are not uncommon in terms of what you would see in a review of a traffic study. I think they've done a good job in presenting the information, they've certainly quantified the impact of the project, and we agree with that analysis, we agree with what the net impact of the project will be. And as you look, if you look at our comments back to the applicant, they're really kind of honing in on specific areas, it's honing in on the project in its specific location. So we have a school that's in close proximity, so it's really looking in more detail at specific areas or aspects of the project that relate to its position within the town, close to school, on a tree-lined road without sidewalks, where we have vehicles traveling at speeds that are well in excess of what the posted speed limit is, and so we need some more information as it relates to that, but the information that's been provided, it's accurate and portrays an appropriate and, I would say, again, accurate representation of what the impact of the project may be.
Okay, thank you. Before I have you answer the questions, as you had pointed out, we did pass along and summarize the majority of the questions that were asked at the last meeting. Just for the record, I would like to clarify that the petitioner has received the additional information and the requests from our peer review engineer, and that they will be able to and willing to respond to any and all questions and additional data needs that have been asked of you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have received the comments and are willing to address all of the review engineer's comments. It will be necessary to do some additional studies when school gets back in session, so it's unlikely that we'll have this for our September meeting, but we would certainly have it completed for the October meeting.
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up to the board questions, and then I'll, we'll get into the audience, why don't you respond to those? And I think we have those questions that we can post up there that were presented to you, and that may even take care of more questions or comments that folks have.
Sure. And hopefully some of these I address as a part of my review. So the first question deals with kind of the study area itself, and so does the, so does the proposed redesign of Freetown Street and County Road improve or lessen the impact of the new project? Could the design be better? People mentioned ice buildup in the winter, so I'm going to leave that latter part to maybe a clarification that maybe one of, either the board or the audience member who asked that question can give me. So as it relates to the improvements at the intersection, I think as we looked at the design the applicant has proposed, we, you know, it's a similar design that we would recommend based on looking at the volume of traffic and the specific turning movements that are happening at the intersection itself. So Freetown Street, because it has delays and long queues that happen, it's best if you can split that traffic up into separate right and left-hand turn lanes, primarily because a fair amount of the traffic is heading toward the interchange with 140. So providing a separate right turn lane gets those vehicles into a different lane, and generally, right turning movements operate with less delay than left turning movements just given the complexity of the movement itself. So separating those out will improve the flow of traffic on the Freetown Street approach. If nothing else, it would reduce the amount of backups or queuing that's happening at the intersection. And then as you see, they're providing the right turn lane, the, this would be the eastbound approach to the intersection, and so what that does, as you look at it, is traffic that's coming to the school, it can have its own lane, so it gets out of the way of the through traffic that's heading to Route 140, so that does improve the flow of traffic at the intersection itself. They have shown a bicycle lane coming through the intersection, which is Mass. DOT standards, they do require that any time that we're implementing improvements, we apply what's known as complete streets, so we need to accommodate all roadway users, and that's what's required. So what that means is sidewalks on both sides of the road, bicycle lanes on both sides of the road, and then you add your motor vehicle accommodations, so those need to be in any design. So they have shown a bicycle lane heading in the eastbound direction itself, it doesn't really connect to anything, and there's no bicycle lanes in either direction after that. So again, as we're looking at this intersection design, the concern that we had, and it gets back to the question, is the stop sign is located at this location here, so that if you're traveling in the through lane, you're not going to see that stop line because it's so far off to the intersection. So to the extent that always stop control stays at this intersection, and again, we've asked the applicant to make sure that that's justified, there would need to be at a minimum a flashing beacon here, so it would flash red if it's all stop control in all directions at the intersection, so that if you're driving through, you don't just drive through the intersection, especially if you're not familiar with the area, because you're not going to expect to have to stop here. So signs and that beacon are going to be important to make sure that you know that you do need to stop at the intersection. But other than that, as we look at it, it's really some refinements, but we agree with the design that's shown on the plan here.
I will comment on the ice buildup, it was just brought up as a question at the last meeting in regards to that intersection. I hope I'm right, I have this right here. It's, they, they have had ice buildup in the past, the town's done some improvements to make sure the water flows off, and maybe it's more of an engineering question down the road to make sure when they design it, that it continues to stay clear, because if an ice, if ice starts to build up there, it doesn't matter what you have for a stop sign, traffic light, or anything, you're going to go right through it, so.
Yeah, that's right. I do know that there, I believe there's a swale over in the corner here.
You are correct, yes.
Yeah, it looks recently new, so that may be something that the town added to drain the intersection. Certainly with this redesign, it's going to meet standards so that drainage will flow well, and I know the town, as they're reviewing it, will ensure that that takes place as well, so hopefully it'll be an improvement. The next question, so are the trip logs and counts accurate? I'll take the two comments together. So are the trip logs and counts accurate, and should they have used more cameras to monitor traffic? So the trip logs and counts are accurate, as I said, that's one of the things that we look at. When we're looking at the traffic counts, again, we have two points to be able to assess. The first is the volume of traffic over two days on Freetown Street, and then we have the counts at each end and at each of the intersections. So as we're looking at the logs of this data, what we're looking sure, what we're looking at is to make sure that you don't have something where in the middle of the day, all of a sudden drops to zero, or that there are some precipitous drops that shouldn't happen during the day. The daily traffic volumes also help us to be able to see if there's a certain volume of traffic, say, heading northbound on Freetown Street, we expect that volume to show up at County Street, we expect the same thing to happen at the intersection here. So we're able to check the traffic counts using both of the types of measurements that they had performed to make sure that there's no anomalies in the data, and we've done that, and we've verified the fact that they are accurate. So using more cameras to monitor the traffic. So using more cameras to monitor the traffic, additional cameras are not going to help with making the data be more accurate. The way that the cameras are used at the intersection are basically, it captures all of the traffic at the intersection. So they put the cameras at a position where they can see all movements at the intersection itself. None of these intersections are large enough that they can't be captured by a single traffic camera. There's nothing complex or wide in terms of the intersections where a single camera would not be able to capture the data that occurs or the turning movement counts at the intersection. So we're satisfied that it did capture the information and the data and backchecking it against the 48-hour counts just kind of proves out that the information was collected properly and it captured all of the information.
Should more cameras have been used elsewhere on the road?
Additional cameras elsewhere on the road, I don't think would have produced any different result in terms of the information itself. I think where they capture the data is appropriate. And again, given the nature of the use along Freetown Street, it's residential properties along the roadway itself. I know there's some commercial properties up toward the northern end, but the way they've collected the data, captured all of the traffic that's coming and going along the roadway, so adding additional cameras on the roadways or at any of the intersections wouldn't have produced a different result. So the next intersection was, should they have monitored traffic by more than two days? So the monitoring of traffic for two days, so 48 hours, is standard practice. 24 hours is a minimum. We always require a minimum of 48 hours when we're looking at traffic studies or when we're conducting them for a residential project. If this was a commercial project and Saturday was a critical period, we would collect data on a Saturday as well. The 48 hours on a weekday is, again, something that will capture the volume and activity on the roadways during a peak time period that coincides when the traffic from the project is going to be peak as well. So it's appropriate in terms of the way that they've collected the data. The other thing that we do when we're undertaking this type of an analysis is because it's collected during a two-day time period, what we look at is traffic flows in the general area 365 days a year, so that we can see how do traffic volumes vary, not only on a daily basis, but also on a monthly basis. And we look at the two days' worth of data that's been collected and we make sure that we're not looking at a below-average condition. So that if it were below a typical average condition, we would adjust the numbers upwards. If it's an above-average condition, which is the case, I believe, here, we wouldn't touch the data itself and we just analyze it because it's an above-average condition. So the specific adjustment factors that we apply to the two-day traffic counts to account for any variations in traffic flow that might happen on a daily or a seasonal basis before we undertake the analysis. And the applicant has done the appropriate adjustment factors so that two days, two days' worth of data collected, applying those adjustment factors results in a reasonable condition to assess the impacts of the project. So the next one, they focus on county road intersections, since they have looked at the Howland intersection. As I had mentioned, we did ask the applicant to undertake a further analysis of the Howland Road intersection to look at not only just traffic operations, so delays in queuing when the schools are in session, but also to look at motor vehicle safety at that intersection and whether there are any improvements that can be undertaken The next question is how far should they have looked at traffic impacts? And this gets to what I had discussed initial, in my, as a part of my initial presentation, which has defined the study area for the project itself. And again, we've confirmed or have affirmed the fact that the study area that they've looked at complies with Mass. DOT standards and it does capture the intersections where, to the extent the project is going to have a pronounced impact where mitigation may be necessary, they've captured the intersections that should be looked at. Low grade issues at 45 Freetown Street where the entrance is slated. So this deals with the sightlines at the intersection itself. So the low-grade issues being if you have a vertical curve, so a dip or a hill on a roadway, that affects the sightlines of traffic. And so a part of that sight triangle analysis, analysis we've asked them to undertake, we'll look at the implications as it relates to the grade of the roadway. We've also asked that as we're looking at the project itself, what we want to have is, to the extent that there are hills or valleys in the roadway where the road from the project is going to intersect Freetown Street, there needs to be a leveling area. So you don't want vehicles either starting or stopping on grade. And so you generally want a condition where it's relatively flat as you're coming out of the project to a stop condition. So you generally don't want the pitch of the road to be any more than 2%. And so we've asked the applicant as a part of the site plan to make sure, to the extent that there are low-grade issues, that that's evaluated as a part of the site distances, but also that is the road from the project is intersecting Freetown Street, that it's coming into the intersection, that it's relatively level. And so the level being no more than 2%. So traffic lights at County and Freetown Street, as I had mentioned, the intersection doesn't meet the criteria to allow for a traffic signal, so that's not something that can be considered at this time at the intersection. F versus D grade. So the F versus D grade, what we're referring to here is what's known as levels of service at an intersection. So as I was speaking to you, I was talking about delays and queuing at intersections, because we all experience how long we wait at a stop sign. We also experience how far cars are backed up in an intersection, more so than levels of service. So the levels of service are given, it basically takes the queuing and the delays at intersections and it gives it a letter grade. So what it's trying to do is it produces a report card of intersection operations. So just like a report card, it reports the experience of a motorist at an intersection like a report card with A being the best and F considered an intersection that's failing. A D is considered the limit of acceptable operation, so you could look at it as you're just passing at a D. An E grade is an intersection that's operating at its design capacity. So design capacity is basically, you can't add any more traffic to an intersection or it's going to trip over into an F grade. So ideally, we want all intersections operating at a D or better before and after the projects' traffic is added. So that's what we're trying to achieve at each of the intersections itself. So as we're looking at that report card, a D would mean that if you're coming up Freetown Street to County Street, that at that stop sign, you wait no more than 35 seconds and then you can make a left or right-hand turn. If it's less than that, then you're dropping below a D. An F would mean that you wait more than a minute at that intersection. So that's how those levels of service relate to the delays that I was talking or speaking about. When you have an F, you have long queues at an intersection, so extreme backups. But again, most of us experience the delay of 35 seconds and the backups that happen at the intersection. So that's what we're most concerned about, not so much the letter grades, but what are the delays? What is the increase in delay as a result of the project? How many cars are backed up? How many cars would be backed up after the project's traffic is added? Danger of kids walking to school on Freetown Street. So as I mentioned, there are no sidewalks, as you know, along Freetown Street. What's concerning is really, it's not so much the absence of sidewalks, but it's the combination of absence of sidewalks and the high travel speeds on the roadway itself. So, you know, those are things that should be addressed independent of this project itself. They're, you know, kind of a fact of what's going on out there. So we've suggested, again, that that's something that needs to be probably more of a town-wide discussion that needs to happen as it relates to Freetown Street, but it's something that's very clear, high speeds and lack of sidewalks on that roadway. And I think the applicant's study has pointed that out. Any safety issues or is the new development dangerous? So I would say, safety issues we've spoken about. So we have specific locations where we know that there are crashes that are occurring that are disproportionate, or a number of crashes that are occurring that are disproportionate to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. We've asked the applicant to look at the crashes that are occurring along Freetown Street, given the fact that we have travel speeds that are well in excess of the posted speed limit. So that'll provide another piece of information to us to be able to evaluate what is going along, on along the roadway itself. As it relates to the term dangerous, that's not a term that we would use as it relates to the project. We want to make it very clear is that the project, properly designed and with appropriate conditions that the board may put on this project, is something that the additional traffic can be accommodated in a safe manner. But again, the applicant has got to prove out all of the things that we've asked for them. And again, the last thing is really, as the board is reviewing this application with council, is making sure that there's appropriate conditions and at some point, there'll be a discussion of mitigation, that all of those pieces come into play. And appropriately designed and mitigated by the applicant, it's not something where the project necessarily is going to create a dangerous condition. And so that's really what our role is, is reviewing it, providing information back to the board. The board then takes that information and will properly condition the project at the appropriate time. That was it in terms of the information that was presented to us, and I guess I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. At this juncture, what I am going to do is ask my fellow board members if they have any follow-up questions for Jeff.
All right, we're going to have to pass the mic. Yeah, are special events that typically happen on a school campus this size ever taken into consideration in traffic studies?
So typically, as it relates to special events, I think, as it relates to the project itself, I don't think, I don't know that, so you don't necessarily account for special events as it relates to looking at the impacts of the project itself, because the, that special event's going to, I think it's going to impact all projects equally in terms of how things might occur as it relates to the impacts of the project. I think we would, you would only look at it if, if for some reason, that special event kind of spilled over and would impact kind of access circulation or as it relates to the project. So if for some reason we were closer to the school and cars parked along Freetown Street, and that may impact access to the project site, especially for emergency vehicles, that would be something that we would consider. As it relates to like flow of traffic, we wouldn't necessarily look at it, because it's going to be, you know, a few times a year, a football game or homecoming or things like that that may happen. They're going to be really spot events that would occur, and so we wouldn't necessarily look at the impacts of the project during those time periods.
One resident did bring up the Pan-Mass Challenge with a stop here this year. But I guess if I looked at the calendar events, there's probably a lot of things I wouldn't necessarily think of that actually happened here, since the campus is kind of large.
Right. And I think it also has to do with the time of day that things like that might happen, because I know that impacts a number of residential roads throughout the Commonwealth during that time period. I know that from the standpoint, because we've had projects along where the Pan-Mass Challenge is an example, does go by. They generally go by and it's a short period of time when the bicyclists go by. But it's not, again, something that you'd necessarily assess as it relates to the project. I think it would be more something from a community perspective and speaking with public safety officers as to how, is it appropriate to manage those events in some fashion, given changes on the roadway such as, you know, additional development taking place?
This is partly for council and for you as well. When we look at the proposed traffic changes on essentially 140 and, or County Street and Freetown Street, is it possible to extend that right turn lane to make it separate second lane on County going to 140? So people could just go from Freetown Street right to 140?
So it would depend upon, it depends upon if there's, it looks like there's enough way. You'd have to have enough right of way to actually do that, but... So it's certainly, it's a design consideration that could be done. It does need to be looked at in terms of, if you were to do that, someone who's on County Street would then need to weave into your lane if it wraps around and gets onto the ramp. So there's some things that need to be looked at in terms of the distance between Freetown Street and the ramp, and can you develop that lane? And then if I'm in the right turn lane, again, there's that weaving maneuver that's going to take place. Some people want to get on the highway, then there's other people that want to get out of the lane and into County Street, so they weave across each other. And you need to have sufficient distance to allow for that weaving to take place. And then you also have to drop that lane at the ramp. So can it be done? Yes, but there's some serious design considerations that probably go well beyond this project.
But if you designed it, you would be able to look at it and figure out whether it was safe or not?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I guess I'll ask council, is that, that's something we could ask them to look into, right?
Yes.
Would you be willing to look into that as an option?
Certainly be willing to explore the option, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a quick question. So in terms of sightlines, are any studies done on individuals coming out of side streets and each driveway down the street?
I'm asking for it.
Oh, closer. There we go, okay. So in terms of sightlines, is the study taking into account residents coming out of side streets in their own driveways?
So the sightlines that they're looking at are for newly created intersections, not existing driveways that are along the roadway. So they're focused on the fact that they're building a new intersection on the roadway itself. Now that being said, the safety analysis that they're going to undertake will show if for some reason, there are crashes that are happening because of some deficiencies along the roadway, either being sightlines or the curvature of the road, or just the fact that people are driving too fast on the roadway itself.
Right, right. Well, the, so does the impact of additional cars come into play with those sightlines? I'm thinking more individual, each street, side street, and driveway.
So clearly, if, we generally don't look at site distances at single-family homes because they don't produce, they don't produce a significant amount of traffic to the extent that you're going to have large volumes trying to come out of each of the homes. Now that doesn't mean that the sightlines are proper coming out of those.
No, I meant the, so I guess it'd be a safety question then. If there's increased traffic on Freetown Street, how does the safety factor into residents pulling out?
Well, being clearly from the standpoint of trying to get anything out of your driveways, there's going to be more vehicles going by you. So, you know, if you look at any situation where there's added traffic, is there an increased potential that something could happen, that there could be a crash, things like that?
Right, but there's no way to really quantify it.
There obviously is. There's really not, no. But if there was a specific roadway or intersection along the road that is of concern, that's where kind of that local knowledge, we talked about study area at the beginning. There is, those are the parameters that we use to try to start with a defined study area, but that never goes to the point where local concerns shouldn't be addressed. So to the extent that there's, you know...
Okay, there is actually one.
Right. So those are the things that the applicant needs to hear as well, because as we're looking at it as transportation professionals, we'd, you know, I don't live here, the applicant's traffic is here.
Right, right.
But you do and the residents do, so if there are specific sightline issues that need to be addressed, this is the time to do that, so then the applicant's professional can, can look at those things.
Okay. Well, I think Bells Brook for one is an important one, especially early morning school time, because it's a cut-through both ways. And I think the backup from the four-way backing up to Bells Brook becomes an issue. So I think that needs to be included in the study as well.
Okay. And I think the data the applicant's collecting can allow for that to take place. If there's a sightline specific to that location that you want them to look at, they can address the sightlines as well when they're out there.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
So to follow up on Chris's point, we've already instructed them to, to look at the intersection of Howland and Freetown. So a little further back towards the site is the area that Chris is talking about. So I guess the only additional would be is to, if we can incorporate that Bells Brook intersection and how that's going to get impacted as well, that would be helpful. That, what we were looking for, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Jerry?
Hi, thank you. My question pertains more to the ingress and egress to the development. Would it be beneficial to consider a single point of ingress into the development from Freetown and a single point of egress onto Freetown? Rather than, because both entrances right now are bidirectional, right?
Right.
So would that improve traffic flow? Would that be beneficial to the flow of traffic on Freetown Street? And what's your opinion in that regard?
So I don't, I don't think, as it relates to Freetown Street, I don't think it would change anything in terms of impacts or the flow of traffic along the roadway. However, when you look at the roadway network within the project site, the one-way circulation doesn't really work from the development perspective, because the circulation doesn't really work very well. Just given the fact of how deep the site is, you really need the two-way access points to distribute traffic within the development, so that it doesn't become concentrated at any one point, but also, as you can see, if you have, it's a, would be a long one-way loop, so the same thing with, I mean, emergency vehicles can drive the wrong way, although the fire chief's gonna tell you absolutely not, because they don't want to encounter a vehicle going in the wrong direction. So they need the ability to be able to, because of the depth of the site, to come in from either direction and exit from either direction, depending on if they're responding to a secondary emergency.
Okay, at this point, I guess we'll, well, you're probably not gonna get much of a break here, Jeff, so, I'd like to open it up to folks in the audience, and the only thing I would ask is, obviously, we have a professional traffic study engineer here, and if we have a question, more so for clarification or additional information that we need, but I would strongly encourage and ask you not to dispute whether you know better than him how to calculate the numbers, so that's, that's my only ask. So I will start with you, Larry. Just remember name and address for the record before you ask the question.
Larry Costant, 45 Freetown Street. Actually, I have two questions. The first was regards to the study that you had discussed that you were in agreement with there, and I guess through you, Mr. Chair, if I'm mistake, not mistaken, the last time we were here, they discussed how they did their study, and they talked about a camera that they had placed at somewhere around 50 Freetown Street, and that the rubber tube way of doing traffic counts at either end was not an accurate way, because they keep getting broken, so they didn't do that. Now during your presentation, you had said that they used a rubber tube count, which I can tell you they didn't, because I travel that road end to end every day, four to five times a day, and I know the two days they did the study. So my question is, how is it that we have conflicting statements, when you say that the count was accurate with the rubber tubes, and they said they never used the rubber tubes? So that's my first question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So, so through the chair, so when you look at the data in the report, you have no way of knowing whether they did a camera, rubber, road tubes, or use a radar device, because the data doesn't tell you that, it just gives you the data. There's three ways to collect the data on the roadway itself, at least three ways. The three traditional ways of collecting the data are road tubes, which is old school, and I don't dispute what the applicant had said, which is that, depending on the type of data we're collecting, we, we would use the road tubes, depending on what we're trying to collect, but yes, they can get cut, they can rip it up. Street sweepers, like the one parking, parked in the parking lot out here, will, it'll get all ripped up in there. So sometimes we use them, sometimes we don't, depending on the data that we're collecting. We can use cameras, which is what the applicant has said he's undertaken, which is another way of collecting the data, which is just, basically, it's picking a photograph of the roadway, and anyone can watch the video, and you can get the number of cars from that. The third way is using a radar device, same thing, mounted up on a tree or utility pole, and it's counting cars, working the same way that the pneumatic tubes do, only it's basically, when a car goes by, it's, something interferes with the radar, it's not getting a bounce back of a signal, so it counts that. So there's three general ways of doing that. When you look at the data in the appendix, you don't know which methodology they use. So I mentioned the road tubes, because the road tubes are generally something that we all recognize, we know how they work, we've seen them on the roadway. The fact that the applicant used cameras and didn't use the road tubes, that's perfectly acceptable. I don't know which one they used, but either of those three methods is appropriate and acceptable to me, but I think what the important thing is, is that the data they collected, I'm using that and checking that against the turning move accounts that they did at either end of Freetown Street, to see if the volume of traffic recorded at the point at 50 Freetown Street where they recorded it, I want to see roughly that same volume of traffic show up at each end of the roadway. If I don't see that, then that says to me there's something wrong with the data. We looked at that information, whether it was road tubes, radar, or video camera, and I think they've done the video camera, we validated the information they presented. So I misspoke, but I will tell you, from what I see in the appendix, I can't tell the methodology, but what I can say is that the data was collected appropriately, and that it resulted in an accurate picture, checked against what they measured at either end during the peak hours.
Larry, second question?
I'll, I'll let, okay. Second question, as I said, I'm at 45 Freetown Street, so I'm just to the right of that egress or, or access road, I'm gonna say. We talked about grade of 2%, I live on that, live in there, and my, my driveway is far more than a 2% grade, I take my life on my hands pulling out every day. So you had mentioned that, you know, we look at road intersections, but not individuals' driveways, so this project potentially could kill just about anybody from 45 to, you know, 41 Freetown Street, but that's nobody's concern, we're not gonna do these triangle studies there, because every single one of us have a serious grade coming up onto Freetown Street, I'm on that curve. You put a road 15 feet away from my driveway, there's, there's at least an accident every two weeks at the top of my driveway, I clean up lights every, every, every week. So someone has to explain to me how this isn't, to do this triangle study isn't necessary on people's driveways. We're the ones that are gonna be, you know, you know, streets are streets, but driveways? We gotta pull out of our driveway to go to work, we gotta pull on driveway to come home from work, we gotta pu, have our kids come out of there, people are gonna get killed. So why aren't we looking at the driveways as well, especially, like I said, speaking specifically for me, I, I'm 15 feet away from that road, and I'm on way more than a true degree pitch, my, my plow guy gets stuck out in the woods because he slides down, down my driveway. So what, what are we doing here? And I guess this is more to the, to the ZBA than, than you, you, you only review what you're given. What are we doing? When are we gonna do this study? When are we gonna look at our driveway, so we don't die? We, the citizens that pay taxes. Again, not directed to you, I was speaking directly to the board.
Yeah, no, I understood that, that's, yeah, that, you really can't answer that question, and again, we're taking all the comments that you folks make, and if we are able to gain additional information, we will, but let's hear all the comments first, and then we can, we can summarize where we're gonna go from here.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall?
Bob Marshall from Barso Street. I'm more concerned about the kids who may be walking down that street, and I, I heard what you, you said about whether buses go in, I'd, I'd like to explore that a little bit. It's my understanding that in most towns, and I think in our town, that kids within a certain distance from the school do not get bused. Do we know whether that's accurate here, and if so, what is the distance?
Would you happen to know that? I, I wouldn't expect you to, but I-
No, I, I do not, I'm sorry.
I, I wouldn't expect him to know that, and honestly, I don't know off the top of my head, my, the information I know is anecdote, like yours, I, I do believe that it, within a certain-
I don't know the answer either, that's part of the reason, but it's been my experience, every time I've seen something like that published in a town, it's been within two miles. But let's just say that it's one mile, I think at least one of these roads is gonna be within that distance, and if not that, I, I think it may even be two. Now, if that's the case, that buses are not going in, and I think that's something that we should explore, to the ZBA, I think we should explore that. If the buses are not going in, then that, in my mind, that's gonna mean a lot of kids are gonna be walking on a road that, in my opinion, I, I traveled it every day for 35 years up and back, and it is, I think, dangerous already, if it doesn't have sidewalks and the speed, I didn't realize, I actually happened to look at my speedometer when I was traveling, I was doing 47, so I guess I'm right in the middle, and I better slow down. But my point, my point is, it seems dangerous already to me, under these circumstances, if we've got all these kids walking, and then in bad weather, et cetera, et cetera, it really seems to me as though enough hasn't been considered about the safety of kids walking in those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Newby, I live at 157 County. Do you guys take into consideration of like how the material is gonna get to this job site, in like an 18-wheeler holding a six-wheeler dump truck, trying to take that turn onto Freetown Street, with 20 cars backed up in the rush hour of 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, even both ways, top and bottom of the street? That's a, that's a big swing. What happens if you jackknock that truck? You're gonna have 20 people try to back up, you know, and then you got cars coming 40 miles per hour on that corner, they don't know that this six cars, seven cars already stopped, so, that's the only thing I'm thinking about. And that's gonna take a whole crap load of moving of cars, once you get jammed up like that.
Right, what I can tell you is there, there are provisions for us to be able to condition permits as far as construction times and when trucks can come and go, but to your point-
Truck drivers, they come whenever they want.
I understand that, I, I, you know, we, we can't, we can't enforce that, but we do try to do the, the best we can with, with any construction projects.
So your contractors' entrances are gonna be both those on that street, or you're gonna have a side road coming off? Because you're gonna have those trucks coming off of 140, trying to get in and on, you're gonna have to be dropping off material and taking material out, a lot, you know, that's the biggest concern about this. I don't care about how this is gonna develop in 20 years, I don't care about your inside parking, just moving back and forth. You can't even get two cars to go side by side on Freetown Street, and you got a truck that's oversized? You kidding me? Taking out mailboxes, you're taking out trees.
I'll, I'll confirm with council, but I don't think we can deny a project based on the construction aspects of saying it's gonna, it's gonna impact the-
So going forward, school's starting in two weeks, why don't you just do a couple pre-runs? 7:30 in the morning, he's a contractor, he probably has general contractors with 18-whealers, do some test runs, see how that goes. Set your little camera up in the corner and see how that truck makes that corner, both ways, it doesn't matter where you're coming from. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Jean Libertori, 32 Freetown Street. Mr. Burke, thank you for your study. I appreciate that in your review, you determined that the number of hours were appropriate, however, because three of our four school systems are all located here, the obvious became clear to you in that what the residents were saying was that the traffic study needed to focus on different times of day. I would like to inquire as to why, when we're talking about the number of rides on the street, we have a 200-unit proposal with a small portion being single-family homes. However, the number of cars that you're talking about are between 110 and 130. In the year 2024, from my point of view, the average home has two cars per family, not one, and so that does, that math to me, it's not my field of study, but it does not compute, and I wonder why it's considered accurate information on that piece, but inaccurate on the time of day. Thank you.
Jeff, go ahead.
Sure. So I think what, the number of vehicles per household doesn't translate into the amount of traffic that's produced, and what I would say as it relates, as it relates, as it relates to the peak hours that we're talking about, I think if you look at your, if you look at the big number, the 24-hour number, it's probably gonna be close to what the estimates are that you have, in terms of if I did two trips per house and multiply by the number of units, over a 24-hour basis, it's probably gonna be close to what your estimate is. But when the, what, when the applicant, or when we are looking at impacts during the peak hour, what you have to remember is that not everybody leaves at the same time, it's not like the shift type of work, where you have the whistle blows, everyone gets in the car, and they all head out. What the applicant's looking at, or what we look at, is a one-hour time period, so it's the amount of traffic that's produced over a one-hour period. So if I get up and I go to work, let's say, you know, between 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, but my neighbor doesn't leave until 7:00 o'clock, that car that's associated with the neighbor didn't leave necessarily at the same time I did, so if I counted sick, 5:00 to 6:00, I'm not gonna pick up the fact that my neighbor didn't leave during that time period, because they work at a different time period, a nurse wake, working a shift, police officer, firefighter, other people may be leaving at different times of the day, but what we're interested in is the absolute highest traffic volume hour. So during a one-hour period, the 110, 136 vehicles is how much is produced during a one-hour period, but if you slide that one hour, let's say, instead of, if it's, let's say the peak hour is 7:00 to 8:00, if I look at a peak hour 8:00 to 9:00, and between 7:00 and 8:00, I produced 136 vehicle trips, it doesn't mean if I slide it an hour to be 8:00 to 9:00, that it all of a sudden drops to zero, it doesn't. It's just not 136, it could be 130, but it's not 136. So what you look at, as you look at the ebb and flow of traffic over the course of the day, is you're gonna see traffic all day, and you're gonna see it spike in the morning, come down, it's gonna have another spike in the afternoon, come down, and then it's gonna peak around the school time period, and then peak again during the time period when people are coming home from work, and then it's gonna drop off. What we're interested in looking at is the spikes during the time of the day, but again, it's a one-hour period, and if you just slide the scale one hour on either side, it doesn't mean it's zero, it just means it's not as high as that spike, but it could be only six vehicles different, so that's what the difference is. But if you look at it over 24 hours, and you multiply by two trips per home, times each of the homes that are there, you probably get to a number that's pretty close to what you're estimating, but again, those numbers are because of the fact that not everyone leaves within that one-hour period that they're looking at, but the one-hour period they're looking at is the peak of the project, and we add that to the peak on the roadway, and we analyze that condition, because that's the worst-case condition to analyze.
Okay, sir, you're up next.
Hi, my name's Steven Montel, I live at 81 Howland Road. I see there's an awful lot of construction, but proposed construction is going on, have they done an environmental survey, an impact survey? I mean, there's a lot of septic systems that are gonna be going in there, and most of us have wells. Has that been studied, the drawdown effect, and, you know, exchange of environmental contaminants and the like?
That is part of the process, they haven't gotten to that yet, we're doing it in different stages, but that will definitely be vetted out.
Will we have availability, be able to view this?
Yes, yes.
Is this a done deal already, is this still in the preliminary stage?
This is not a done deal, the permit isn't even close to being-
Okay, thank you.
-decided on whether to be issued or not. Go ahead, sir.
Kenneth Sutcliffe, 50 Freetown Street. I would just like to offer a couple of observations, since I am at 50 Freetown Street, I think what I have to say is relevant. I will say that it is incredibly difficult driveway to pull out of, it will frequently take me, you know, three to four minutes, five minutes to pull out of the driveway, the line of sight is very difficult, I cannot see anything that's coming over the top of that hill, coming towards the high school. Cars are frequently traveling at, I would say, in excess of the average speed that was recorded, right, I mean, I get it's an average, but, you know, there, there are cars that are coming at 60-plus miles an hour over that hill. In the winter, I believe that the topography causes a problem, I think there's a microclimate that's developed at the bottom of that hill, I know that as a gardener, my gardens are affected as a result of that microclimate. Things don't bloom at the same time that they bloom elsewhere, cold air pools at the bottom of that hill, and I believe that it's the cause of the increase in the number of accidents that occur at the bottom of that hill, and as people come over, they hit their brakes, they can't stop. Every winter, there are multiple accidents at that point. I've had multiple cars off into my woods, they've hit the trees there over and over again, I have called the police on this, they come and they respond, so I'm sure there's some records of that, where, where, you know, they've responded. There have been accidents where I've walked out, and I've found people in their cars. I found a young man in his car, and his hand was broken, because he had grabbed onto the steering wheel and hit one of the trees in front of my house, I think it's a major I'll also add that, you know, I'm not opposed to, to development in general, so I'm not here just saying, you know, I'm opposed to all development, I want it to all stop. I just think that that's a huge concern, it's a public safety issue. I don't want, you know, my kids even pulling out of the driveway, I'm, I'm concerned about that. I go to work every single day, I leave at around 7:00, 6:50 or 7:00. I have to roll down my windows year-round on both sides, and strain to hear traffic coming, and I frequently don't know if it's an electric car, you know, or a quiet car, sometimes I can't hear them coming, and they just zip over the hill, and my line of sight from my driveway is obscured by trees, but it's also the topography of the land itself that is causing a problem, and that's something without regrading that entire section of the street, I don't think that will be alleviated. That's, again, just offering my, my observations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim Boyad, in Bellsbrook Road, thank you for your insights. First of all, Freetown Street, in the school year, when everybody's back from vacation, and not just the high school, but the middle- and not just the high school, but the middle school, intermediate school, is a different place than what it is now. Any study that was done before the school year doesn't have a lot of relevancy. You have to look at it in that situation. Second of all, there's a quantum leap as the town develops from a country town to someplace else. If you look at the traffic from the Middle Borough Rotary down to the library, it now takes 20 or 30 minutes longer in the afternoon. It didn't come all at once. More traffic, you could just go right through. And then one day, there's like a 20 or 30-minute extra ride because there's bumper-to-bumper traffic all afternoon. So what are we going to do to this road? That, to me, is a very important question when we're all done with this. Next, in that map on Free Town Street, you have all those blocks right on Free Town Street. Are there going to be driveways from there going on to Free Town Street? And so we don't need that. And last of all, if you're traveling east on Howland, there's a terrible sun effect there, right at the intersection near the high school. We had a police officer struck by a car there years ago. So those are my questions and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you were talking on Free Town Street, looks like a whole bunch of driveways. Are you talking... Oh, I guess he's gone. I think he's talking about the lots, the existing houses there, is what my guess is. Okay, sir, you're up.
Hi, my name is Jim Maloney. I live on 24 Free Town Street. I'm kind of in the same boat as the guy from 45 Free Town Street and 50. I have a blind driveway. I probably got a sightline of about 30, 35 feet. To get out of my driveway and on the other side of the street, I have about three seconds, okay? And if it's the wintertime and I get caught on a lump of ice, I'm saying my prayers. I do the same thing they have to do, put your windows down and listen. I mean, it's perilous now, and without the access road, it's going to be straight across from my driveway. All right? The old AAWIL gravel road that the cell phone tower is used now. And as far as tractor-trailers coming up, they were just bringing a generator into that cell phone antenna. They had to back the trailer into my driveway to make the swing in there, okay? That's how narrow that road is. So you're going to have cement trucks coming in there, 18-wheelers and everything else. I'm at the nucleus of this thing. And, you know, it's not going to get any better. You know what I mean? I mean, it's just as stress-tuous as 45 or 50. I don't know, you didn't mention 24, that curb there. I don't know if you, you know, evaluated that. That's probably one of the worst curbs on the whole street. It's at the beginning. So, you know, and like they say, 49 miles an hour, 50, that's a low estimate. Okay? I just want you to take that into consideration. And I spoke to them about this when they first, this first came up, a couple of meetings ago. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, you're up.
Hi, Peter Benau. I'm over on 22 Baker Lane. My question is in regards to when you're talking about the 110 to 136 cars, and it's really kind of done in a shift because it all relates to the three out of the four schools are at that location. So everybody's trying to get there essentially within that one-hour timeframe, depending on whether they're in, you know, 4th grade through 12th. The other component is if you're on this side, like the Howland roadside and you're going down Free Town, the one other school is on the opposite side. So if you're going to K through 3, and you're over here, you have to go down Free Town Street to get over there. So have we done an analysis on the time impact during that peak hour that you're going to add another 110 cars to a three-way intersection and then to a one-way stop? And what that does to the time effect for the kids having to get picked up by buses or parents trying to bring them? I know when my daughter was in kindergarten, it would take 45 minutes to go from Baker Lane to the kindergarten on the bus ride. So you add this in, and you're talking about, what, an hour plus each way to school on roughly five or six miles? So I'm not sure if that's part of your analysis, but if it not, then I think it should be done.
So the analysis the applicant has undertaken does show you what the... You can look at the study, and what it will say is for any specific movement at any of the intersections you talked about, you can look at what the increased delay is. So if you know in reality how long it takes you to get through the intersection to get where you're going, you can take the added delay that's caused by the project and add that to the time that you currently have. So that delta is provided. So you could just, again, if it takes you an hour, you can look and see if they're adding how much time they're adding to the specific movement at the intersection, and that's how much time is going to be added to your travel.
So they've done that, and what is the added time?
It depends on where, it depends on... They've done it for each movement at the intersection, so it would depend on which specific movement that you want to look at, but it's all as part of the study?
And those are acceptable times? So if you add, so right, let's say, there's 10 cars each way, and now that goes to 30 cars each way getting backed up there, what's that timeframe look like and is that acceptable to the town?
Well, that's up for the town to determine. What I look at is what is the net increase in delay as a result of the project? The net increase in delay, the most significant impact was at the intersection that they're approving, and what you see is the delays go down. So there's a net positive that results from the project being instructed, the added traffic at that intersection, and then the improvements they're doing reduces the delays and queue at that intersection, so it's actually a betterment. As it relates to the all-way stop here, they're not adding any capacity there, so delays are going to go up at that intersection. But as we had looked at it, it's not significant. I'd have to go back and look. It's not something where we talked about the D and the 35 seconds. It doesn't add 35 seconds of additional delay at the intersection. Because again, what we're looking at is what is the average delay over the course of an hour? So yes, more traffic arrives, but not, you know, some of it's, as you said, some of it's going north, some of it's going south, some comes down, makes a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn, some might come straight across to go to the school. So the traffic gets dispersed at the intersection itself once it gets down to the intersection. So the net increase as a result of the project is not something that made it go from like a D to an F. It wasn't something where all of a sudden, if we look at those report card grades, all of a sudden, we have failing conditions everywhere. That's not what the analysis showed. It showed delays go up and queues go up, at least at the all-way stop out here. With the improvements at the other end, things actually get better. But again, part of what the board is doing and what I'm doing as the board's consultant is to look at ways to address safety that's been mentioned. Are there ways to reduce speed along that roadway? Are there things that can be done to improve sightlines? Are there things that the applicant can do to facilitate the completion or construction of sidewalks? Things like that that are commensurate with the impacts of the project. So we're gathering, I'm gathering information just as the board is, so then I can assist the board with developing appropriate recommendations for conditions that the applicant may take that to, you know, effectuate some changes, to address the impacts, to address the concerns that you have. So I'm looking at those delays and the added travel times and then trying to see other things that can be done as a part of this project to make things better, but I think importantly, safer.
So let me make a couple of comments there. I mean, in particular, not just in particular too, but in general, and I think Jeff did a good job. I mean, keep in mind, safety, significant, real egregious safety issues, we can bring the hammer down and say, you have to do this, or we're going to say no. When it comes to increased time for traffic, you know, I've lived in Lakeville since the '70s. Traffic has increased like crazy because the town has developed. Is this going to add to that? Anybody would be a fool to say one more house wouldn't add to that. But unfortunately, our hands are tied. We can't say no just because, all right, it's going to add five more minutes to your ride from Baker Lane to Assawampsett or from Main Street up to Aponequit or the middle school or whatnot. So as Jeff pointed out, what we're doing is we're gathering information. I understand everyone's frustrated, but hopefully you'll realize and recognize, and that's why I wanted it to go up there. We did pass the direct questions you folks had last time. We tried to summarize it as best as we could, and we wanted Jeff to answer them directly, even though he'd already answered some of it within his presentation. We do want you to know we are listening. We will do what we can to make this the best possible project. And if we get to a point where something environmentally is going to be dangerous to people, they turn around and say, things are going to happen where people, you're really significantly going to, more so than statistically, like people are really going to get hurt here, the board has it within their purview to say no. But that's really where we can say no. Other than that, we're here to mitigate as much as we can to say, listen, this is an F. What do we do to make it better? I understand no one's probably necessarily going to, and correct me if I'm wrong here, the death rate's not going to go up at that intersection, but what's going to happen is you're going to turn around and turn a minute into a minute and a half, and as a community, no, we don't want that. What can we do? What can you do for us to help us, you know, make this a little smoother, so to speak? Not that it's going to make it necessarily better, it's things people are going to be, fall in love with, but what can we do to get something out of it, to make it as good of a project as it can be up on the community's end? So just, you know, please, folks, keep in mind, that's what our role is here to do. Make sure that it's not egregiously a safety issue, and honestly, we can only rely on the experts. I can tell you right now, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm not a fire official. You know, I'm not an engineer by trade. You know, the most of us up here are different professionals in different areas. Whether you believe it or not, we're you and the audience. That's why we're on this board. We're supposed to be the reasonable people who can turn around and say, listen, this doesn't make sense to us. You've got to explain it to us and tell us why it's not going to turn around and be that egregious or whatnot. So at the end of the day, we're mitigating as best we can. It's a long process we need to go through, and we are listening and hearing everything you say. If we don't react to a question or a comment that you have right now, we all take notes, we're all going to make sure that that information goes to the proper individuals who are reviewing this for us and get us back the best information we can. Sir, you're up next, Dwight Baird.
Barry Evans, 16 Free Town Street. Last time, I'm a professional truck driver. I've been on Free Town Street since '86. I don't think that new plan is really going to alleviate anything, like I said the last time, because one bus, maybe two, one tractor-trailer is going to make those lanes move. They're not going to work. You have the blind turn coming east on County Road. If you put a stop sign there, it's going to be even more dangerous. The bigger thing I thought of after I left the last time is I started at the mall, go all the way to New Bedford on County Road. The state has taken out every single stop sign except for 79 and County, replaced it with a rotary or a light for safety reasons. Why do we think that the state will now say, I have a great idea. Let's put two stop signs on County Road. How's that going to work? Why would they want to do that when they've taken them out of every other intersection? And this plan seems to depend on that intersection, something happening.
Sir, I'll comment on that, and Jeff, if you wanted to, after me, feel free to. As we've said at prior meetings, if that's their plan and the state doesn't approve it, their plan's dead in the water. They don't move forward with the project.
Along with that, where are we on the 180-day thing since now they're back to at least two months on the traffic study?
There's other things we're going to be talking about at other meetings at this point. And rest assured, I am more than confident that if we are making progress and going forward and we ask them to extend the 180 days, again, they've done it a couple of times, I'm confident that they'll continue to do that.
Right now, we're still stuck, right? What's our date right now?
I believe, and we'll confirm this for the record, we can double-check. Initially, it was November, but it's been extended twice at this point, I believe. Correct, counsel? I'm asking petitioners' counsel. So if it's been extended twice from November, I think we're through January at this point, correct? Into January?
That's correct. We have extended twice.
Okay.
And the traffic, but their traffic, new traffic study won't be ready for at least two months, they said.
We want them to capture the data as the recommendation of our engineer for the schools, which we wouldn't want to do that now.
Right.
So they wouldn't be ready. But there are other issues we need to deal with in the meantime. So we're going one by one. If, you know, the traffic study will be back in October, which will be well in advance of the 180 days.
So will anybody be going to the state in the meantime to see if we should even move forward? Or are we just going to keep moving forward and...
That's on them. They're basically rolling the dice. If they put it in, and we get to the end and they say, we agree with this condition, that condition, and one of the conditions being you're going to put that traffic, redo that traffic intersection with the stop signs, that means they have to do it. Again, not to beat a dead horse, but if the state comes back six months, a year from now and says, sorry, we're not going to improve it, then they can't do anything. They can't do anything with the development.
If I'm not mistaken, they said the last time, the state wouldn't even rule on that till sometime in the future after their 180 days was up. Is that correct?
Yep.
So... Yes, the state, yeah, the state wouldn't rule on that before the 180 days.
They wouldn't rule before. You have to say yes or no.
That's why it's a condition on the permit.
But they would get, wouldn't they get moving already? They can't move?
Well, they could answer that, but boy, I wouldn't be spending a lot of money if they weren't sure the state was going to say yes. I mean, it would be kind of, if the state says no and you have 200 units that you can't be occupied, I'm pretty sure they wouldn't be in business too long.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Ma'am?
Chris Sargo, Baker Lane. One of the things that Mr. Evans said I was going to ask about was, does County Road, is that a state road or is that a city? State road?
That's a state road, correct? Jeff?
I'll have to check on that. It's just because it's a state-numbered route does not, even if as a...
Well, County Road isn't a state-numbered road, is it?
So if it's, I would think that at the interchange is probably state, but the rest of it is probably town road if it's not. If it doesn't have a state-numbered route, and even if it has a state-numbered route number, doesn't mean it's necessarily under state ownership. So if County Road is not a state-numbered route, then it's under town jurisdiction, not under state jurisdiction.
So that's something that you have to look into then.
We can look into it.
Yeah, because, I mean, his question would be completely out of the realm.
Yeah, but even if, so not, even if it were on state highway, the chair is right. Number one, Mass DOT doesn't, you know...
Oh, they have precedence over it.
Well, even if it were, and I'm not saying that it is, the state's not going to look at, they don't review projects that aren't real. So if it doesn't have an approval or someone has mandated it as a condition of approval, the state doesn't look at it, even if it's on their roadway, if it's not a project they're doing. If County Road is under local jurisdiction, the state has no jurisdiction over it. It would only have jurisdiction if for some reason the work that's being done impacts the interchange. And at this point, it doesn't go back to, it doesn't go to the point where it would impact the interchange.
I guess I'm confused, but...
In other words, the state's saying, we don't approve in theory.
Right. But there was a meeting a couple of months ago that they said if the state didn't approve it, they would pay for it, is what I thought they said.
Okay, so they told you it's a state highway? That that road is a state highway?
It is a state highway, the more, yes.
Okay. So, okay. All right. So I have a couple of other things. Coming down Free Town Street, from what I understand, is if you have a child in like kindergarten or the elementary school, they pick you up in front of your house by, with the bus. So how would that affect all those houses in there for all the kids that need to be picked up in front of their houses?
So I'm going to go, so I just looked at the traffic study, just to clarify my knowledge on it. So it is a state highway, so it does require Mass DOT. According to the traffic study, it says it's a state highway, so therefore, Mass DOT needs to approve the intersection improvements. Mass DOT will not review and approve intersection improvements for a project that has not been approved by the town.
By the town, okay.
So they won't review it until such time as the board has issued a condition, and it's a condition of the approval. Once that's done, the applicant can submit the plans and the board's approval and request permission to make the intersection improvements. That's why, as the chair had said, it's a condition of the approval and it's subject to getting the permits. If they can't get the permits, then they come back. They'd have to come back and say, we couldn't get the permits, so here's what happens.
Okay.
To the extent that the school bus is not going to go into the project site, it would pick up children at the end of the street. So these children would need to walk to the end of the street, which is why we've said to the applicant, you need to contact the school department and figure out how they're going to pick children up, if they're going to be pick children up. And then if they're not going into the project site and they are going to pick the children up, accommodations need to be made at each end of the road so that children can wait safely and not stand in the roadway. And that consideration also is given to the fact that parents may park at the end of the street waiting for the bus. And you need to be able to still, a fire truck or other vehicles have to be able to get into the neighborhood and not have those cars blocking the ability of the intersection to function. So that's homework we've asked the applicant to undertake.
Now, when did you do your study? Or did you just take the information from them and just?
We don't under, so we review.
Relay your.
We review the applicant's study. We do not undertake our own separate study. We review the information the applicant has submitted and making sure that it's consistent with the same type of information that I would use in conducting a study. If it's not, then we would ask the applicant to undertake some additional analysis. But we do not go out and do our own.
You don't actually go out and do it.
Yeah, let me comment on that only because this has been brought up in the past. I'm going to have counsel respond to that only because we, we do not, we aren't in the position to go out and get our own, our own study at this, not even at this juncture in these types of situations. So Amy, if you want to comment.
So Jeff just reviewed what they have given you.
If you want to comment, yes, that's all, that's all he's doing. He's reviewing, he's just, he's verifying the validity of it. He's telling them additional information that he needs so he can give us the best possible recommendations and whatnot. But let me have Amy respond to why we have to do it this way.
Sure, so because the applicant is paying, it's called peer review and it's under 44 section 53G. And the, our peer review will essentially, will review all of the applicant's submittals, all of the applicant's reports. But our peer review engineer is not allowed to create their own reports. They're only allowed to review the applicant's reports under the statute.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, sir?
So Tim Pereira, I just bought 78 Freetown Street this year, so I came tonight with a couple of concerns. Number one, obviously, property values, that's a different topic, different time. And number two, more importantly is safety. I have three kids all attending school on this campus here. And I just wanted to say thank you for your insight into issues and areas regarding that. I actually don't have a question today other than how do I ask questions as they come up? How do I get information? Is there a portal on the internet where I can basically find information on what's going on?
If you go to the town's website and the zoning board's page, we post information as we get it. There is an email address there that you can send questions or concerns to. And it also has a link to the developer's site, which posts anything that they've submitted to us and is active at this point.
Perfect, thanks.
You're welcome. Ma'am?
Kim Borch, Baker Lane. I was hoping I could get a little clarification on the study from Freetown in Howland. If I heard you correctly, you asked them to do a more extensive study on that? Because my personal feeling is the traffic that backs up there is an F. So if I just want to be sure that that is, did I hear that correctly?
You, well, it wasn't incorporated in the original study to the degree our peer engineer wanted. So that is going to be done by them to get more details and more information so he can make an accurate assessment of it and give us any recommendations he has. So that's, that will be coming in the October meeting.
Thank you.
Again, October meeting because he wants the info, and I say he, Jeff, wants the information after the schools are open. So to meet in September, that information he won't have at that point. Sir?
Hi, Mark, Mass. 25, Freetown Street. I don't remember the councilor's name at the end there, but he had mentioned about the egress, not the one-way for the whole unit, but each egress, say, one way in or one way out. That would be an issue? I think when you were explaining it, you were thinking that the whole project inside would be one-way. Would there be an issue with either end being an in and out? That's what you were referring to, right, counselor?
Exactly.
Just those two egresses?
One way in, one way out.
Yep.
He's talking, get rid of the second egress, I guess, and you just have one.
No, 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 no.
You want.
You have the two. One is an in-only and one is an out-only. Whatever one, he chose to do, whatever was the safest for.
You want, are you able to respond to that, Jeff?
So what I would say is you have to redesign the project.
A whole project have to redesign?
Because you've got all law for recirculation within the site. Okay, because if you, you can't get to a point, the way the site is laid out, you can't get to a point, let's say if I made the southern point as the.
Entrance, say the entrance. It's got the hill, it's got the slope, say you got the entrance.
Right, so if I come, I'd have to look at it. It's poor circulation. I'd have to look inside, I'd have to look inside the site to make sure it circulates properly. And then I also have to think about, and again, your fire chief would have to weigh in, because generally what they're going to say is, I'm not going against a one-way.
But it's only a one-way about 200 feet, it's not?
Yeah, but if you're in the car trying to go out and that fire truck goes in, the last thing you're expecting is that the fire truck is going to be coming at you. So then what do you do? And so that's, so it just needs to be looked at. I'm not saying it can't happen. I would say we need to look at circulation within the site. And then the fire chief has got to say, I'm, I'm fine with that, having two one-ways. And that I don't have an issue trying to get to my response time. Getting to any point in the site is not compromised by having those one-ways. So I'm not saying it can't happen, but I don't think it's something that I can answer the question without doing a lot more thinking about circulation within the site. And then really, the fire chief has got to weigh in and say they're okay with their response time and getting to the furthest-most unit within the site and that that won't compromise any of it.
So let me comment. Counsel has informed me that this has been requested in other sites throughout the state and that the fire chiefs, I don't know if it's their association or who it is, recommends against it. They do not approve it. So we can, I will tell you this, we'll reach out to our fire chief and ask him to confirm that. But I'm sure counsel's probably right at that. And if he says no, as Jeff pointed out, it's a non-starter.
Okay, I just had one more thing about, you said questions last time. A lot of people had mentioned Highland Road, the study, a study there because it's backed up now. If you put that stop sign on County now, it's going to make that even worse. Cars trying to get out there, it's over. You go there four o'clock right now, it's ridiculous. You're waiting 10 minutes to get through that.
I've asked them to look at that because, because I just think it's sort of like I was saying with that stop sign and County Street being so far out of the way. Me not being familiar with the area, I sure as heck wouldn't expect a stop sign there if I'm on County Street, County Road. So I think that thing of, the issue of what driver expectation is, as well as looking at the volume of traffic, there are specific criteria you look at to see if all ways stop is appropriate. And you have to do a specific study to document it because of the fact that it does create safety issues. It can. So that's why I've said to the applicant, you know, this all looks good geometrically, but the traffic control needs to be evaluated to make sure that it meets the criteria because people, as everyone was mentioning, what people were mentioning about the trucks, the blind curve, the backups, that all is considered in that evaluation. So we've asked the applicant, when they come back, to provide the information to show that that's a good idea and that it's not going to cause those impacts that everyone's been describing.
Thank you.
Sir?
Scott Brennan, 55, Howland.
Sir, you had talked about the triangulation on this north entrance. And you said, did you give the distance of how much the road actually is when they try to go in and out on both sides? You said it was 22 feet wide.
Right.
I heard that part.
Correct.
But when they're trying to come in, as we know, that Freetown Street is not a very wide street. It's very, very narrow, has lots of turns and dips and whatnot. Is there any, had they given you anything about how much they're going to cut back on each one of these curves for people can get in and out of there?
So that's the information we've asked them to provide to us. It's going to come back to us in two pieces. It's the site triangles that we were talking about.
That's right, I'm sorry.
But it's also, right, but it's also those turning maneuvers. Because what you're going to see more so as it relates to the width of the road is what people describe in terms of the trucks, they can't swing wide because they would go off the edge of the roadway. That can't happen. So they need to show in that turning analysis that the vehicle can stay in its own lane and make a left turn or right turn going in, the same thing going out. And that the width of Freetown Street has to be sufficient to allow those vehicles to stay in the paved area. But not only that, they can't cross the center line.
I heard you speak about the fire trucks when they were trying to come in and get out, that there would, an average fire truck would have enough room, you think that, wouldn't go on top of a curb?
We've asked them to show that. We haven't seen that.
Well, I could tell you, I've been a firefighter for 26 years. I could tell you that your tower unit that we have here in town, fantastic truck, I think it's a great, a great truck to have, is not going to make that corner. The average fire truck might, you know, a ladder truck and a fire truck, you know, an engine, are completely different.
Jeff, Jeff, let me interrupt for a second. So we will make sure that the biggest truck in town can get through there.
Okay.
Jeff's going to confirm that.
Awesome.
And you're a firefighter, so the chief in Lakeville's going to confirm that too. So you will, there's no end around on that one.
Yeah, make sure that's cool, yeah. And one more question. We talked about the southern entrance right there. And you said the speed, the average speed was like, we'll call it 47 miles per hour. The line of sight going around that corner on Freetown Street, you cannot tell me that somebody pulling out of that southern entrance, somebody traveling at almost 50 miles per hour, they're not going to have, they're not going to have an accident right there. That, there's no line of sight. We can see it right there. That's right on the curb. There's no way you're going to be able to slow down quick enough if somebody, like you said, you used the stall factor. There's no way if a car stalls right there, that somebody come around the corner. There is no line of sight, there's the curb. You can see it yourself. There's no way you're going to be able to stop in time without hitting a vehicle. Never mind a bus. If the kids are being picked up at this entrance versus the other entrance, the bus is stopped there. There's no way a car doing 50 miles per hour is going to be able to stop before it hits those people or hit a kid. I mean, that's just, that's part of your traffic study. You should really be looking at that.
So, so to be clear, we've asked them to look at it. You're going to see it, you're going to see a plan that shows it and you'll be able to look at it and say you can't see. Or you can see, but you've got to cut all these trees down. Whatever it happens to be, there's going to be a, we asked for a specific plan that shows exactly what you described.
Awesome.
So you're going to see turning maneuvers for the largest anticipated responding emergency vehicle, which will be the tower truck. And you're going to see those site plan, site triangles that are going to show exactly what you described. They're going to show exactly what it looks at on a, on a drawing so that you can take a look at it. We'll be able to look at it and you'll be able to see it.
One more question and I'll sit down. Have they looked at access from somewhere else? I mean, this is a big project, right? I mean, it's huge. There's, right, so this is just one portion of it. There isn't any way to look at maybe closer to 140 on the other side? I mean, we'd probably be impacting a different town. But that's really what we need to look into. Because then we would probably solve all of these problems. Go ahead, Chair, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. I just, you know, unfortunately, we can't dictate where they use an entrance or an exit from. All we can do is review where they're using it from and looking at the impact of it and make sure it's not excessively dangerous and whatever we can do to mitigate it.
And that's great, but have you asked them to look into a different place?
Oh, we have, we have. I don't know.
And they're not willing to do that at all, gentlemen?
We've, over here, you can talk to me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we have asked, we have asked them in the past and we have not received a positive response from them to look at another entrance or exit.
So I'm just trying to think ahead, but I, not, not that far ahead, but 20 years down the line. But this project obviously is going to be bigger than we will all be able to anticipate. But if you could have access from somewhere else, it would probably alleviate most of these people's problems. You're not on Freetown Street. You're coming in on the other side. It would just make more sense.
I hear you. We've asked. We can't force them to do it, unfortunately.
Got you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so just for the, we got two women up here. You guys are the last two questions only because we want to wrap this up. And then, but hang on. We, you can email whatever question you want. We will make sure we pass those along to the traffic, traffic study engineer. All of your questions will get answered whether you're up at the mic or not tonight, so. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Nancy Van La Hoven, 165 County Street, Lakeville, State Road. You keep calling that thing down the bottom of Freetown Street and County Street, an improvement. You don't know that. Because when you go down Freetown Street, which is a lot of hills that the water goes down and water goes down, on the right-hand side, there's a ditch and all that water collects there. And when it overflows, it goes right into County Street and becomes a skating rink and goes right down in my property. I've watched many cars go right down and to visit my house. And you're not going to stop that. I don't care what improvement you say is an improvement. That corner and that ditch, whatever you do, water goes downhill and it's, Freetown Street is not the place for all these egresses. It's not the place. And it's a safety issue with all of the neighbors, all of the children. And I'm heartsick about it. Thank you.
Ma'am?
I wanted to ask if the board could let the residents know during the time period where the developer or the applicant is reviewing the recommendations from the peer review, could the zoning board of appeals speak to the residents about which topics we might expect in September and October so that we could be prepared?
We will. We've announced what we're going to talk to prior to each meeting. So we will make sure when we close this meeting, we'll let you know on the agenda what our focus will be for September. We already know that at this point, traffic is going to be in October. And if anything else is going to be in October, we would let you know that as well.
Okay, and one more question that I'm not clear on. There was some discussion about state requirements for width of the road, requirement for bicycle lanes, et cetera. There was almost also a comment made that no property would be taken other than town-owned property. Does that mean that, is there that six-foot piece in play where the town owns six feet from the street as it exists now into each of the properties?
I'll let, if you don't mind, Jeff, I'll let you respond to that only because it's not necessarily always six feet. It's, there is a road outline and that's what the town owns. A lot of times it goes on to what people think are their, their front yard or whatnot, but it's not an exact number. It's not like you have six feet from where the road ends and then 10 years later, you've got another six feet. You end up taking a person's entire piece of property. But you can probably clarify that a little better than I could, Jeff.
So to further clarify, so portions of the road are state highway layout. So County Road is state highway, so that's state property. Freetown Street, there is a width that's town property. So the town, the road is constructed within a town layout. So there's the physical pavement and then the town owns beyond, typically the town owns beyond the paved area. I don't know exactly what that width is, but the plans, you know, as you see their dark line in the plan here, generally that's, that's the layout that the town owns and then the road is somewhere within that layout. I don't know exactly, the road isn't always, it usually is centered, but it's not always centered. So it's not an exact distance as to whether it's six feet on one side or whatever it happens to be. But you can, the town will have plans and their survey drawings may actually show you how much the town owns on the road. And then there's the physical pavement and then beyond the pavement, the town owns additional land on either side of the road. But the road, ideally, it's right in the middle, but it's not always in the middle. So I can't say it's exactly six feet on one side or the other. But the survey drawings and town records will show you exactly how much the town owns.
And that's a predetermined amount that is in writing and doesn't change?
It doesn't change unless for some reason the property owner or the town took more land or the property owner gave land. Other than that, it's in the deed to the property. It defines exactly how much, how much property you own and where it starts and stops as it relates to the layout along Freetown Street. But you can see, the town has records showing how much the town owns along the street itself.
So if part of the safety plan was to put sidewalks, those sidewalks would be within that piece, but the town might not necessarily be able to take additional land because the width of the road doesn't comply with the safety survey by the state in terms of vehicles turning in and out or to accommodate amount of traffic, et cetera, over the seven-year plan?
So you'd need to look at how much land the town or the state owns at specific locations along the roadway. Typically, it owns more land than the physical pavement. So often, there's room to be able to make improvements within the town-owned land. But it, but it varies. Ideally, anything that the applicant is proposing to do needs to be on their land or own, or town, land owned by the town or state for which they can obtain permission to implement those improvements. And I think that's what they're looking to do up at the intersection of Freetown and County is to construct improvements within land either owned by the state or the town that they can do with proper approvals.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm going to go against what I said, but I have a question first. Do you have anything new to add?
Yes, I think so.
So if you don't, I'm not going to tell you to stop. I'll probably cut you short and tell you we've already answered it, but make sure it's new, please.
Certainly, thank you, appreciate it. Michelle Belliard, Little Farm Road. My question is, the traffic study that was done before, a lot of the results presumed that there'd be improvements on the county roadside when they were analyzing everything. If for whatever reason, those improvements were not able to be made, there'd obviously be increased traffic and degraded levels, right? Does it approach anything near a level that would lead to like a recommendation against the volume? Or is it just, it doesn't matter, there's more volume, there's no concrete safety issues? It is what it is.
So let me take a stab at that first and then I'll let you correct me if I'm wrong. I think what you're saying is if the state says, no, we're not going to. I think what you're saying is if the state says, "No, we're not going to allow you to do that," that intersections at an F now, if it becomes an F minus, which is really going to turn around and make it unsafe and potentially cause for fatal car accidents, I'm guessing if, if we've had information that said it's going to cause a significant increase in fatal car accidents, that would be dangerous, and I think at that point we would say, "Yeah, we have, we have the silver bullet to say no," but I'll, I'll have you confirm whether I'm right or wrong.
No, that's a hundred percent right, we've reviewed the project, as you heard, predicated upon what the applicant has provided, the applicant is proposing to make those improvements. So as we're reviewing the project, the presumption is the improvements are in place, because that's what they presented, so what our expectation is, is to the extent the project moves forward in a fashion that the board approves it with conditions, that that would be one of the conditions, because our review and what we're suggesting to the board as a part of our analysis of the project's impacts, is that that work gets done. So the work needs to get done, if that work can't get done, then all of the basis of our recommendations to the town would be null and void, we would then have to go back and look at what the chairman had said, which is, okay, they can't undertake those improvements, so what happens? Then we would need to look at the condition that you described, which is they can't make the improvements, and so what happens? Does more traffic head down to the four-way intersection, because they can't get out through this intersection, and what does that mean? So we would have to evaluate that, but that's not what's being proposed at this time, what's being proposed is a project with those improvements, it would be a wholly different review if those improvements weren't taking place.
Like a whole separate traffic study, essentially?
Correct, and our recommendations and discussions with the board would be different.
Okay.
Yes, just to clarify, you know, I use the, kind of the example of an F to an F minus, if that F minus is solely because it's going to increase your time from a minute and a half wait to two and a half minutes, but it's not going to, you know, impact the, the danger of the intersection, it's just going to cost you more time in your car, keep in mind, that's something we can't deny it for, it's got to be safety-specific.
And that's the condition I think we're probably in, right, is just more time, honestly?
It's a pure guess like you are, that's probably more time than anything else, but we rely on the traffic expert to tell us if it was, if it was more than that, so.
Okay.
Follow-up question, or?
Yeah, just a small question, so if we make a condition for them to improve that intersection, can that condition require that improvement to happen before any work done on the site? Or is it before habitation?
I don't think we can, but I'm going to have council confirm that for me, and just for the record, I'm pretty sure they can't get too far into it till they get that approved, because like I'd said, you're not going to invest, they're going to have to invest into a project to have the state not approve it, but could you confirm whether I'm speaking accurately or not, Amy?
Sure, we could, sorry, we could condition the project that the improvement has to be approved before a building permit is issued, and then it has to be constructed before certificate of occupancy is issued, but we would, we would frame it like that.
Okay, thank you for the mic.
You're welcome. Okay, do we, how quick's your question?
May I ask a question that does not have to do with the traffic?
No, and I don't mean to be rude about it, but we, we have to, because, because we said this is what we're talking about tonight, this is what we're talking about, but what I would encourage you to do is just email the question when you get home, and if we can answer it, you'll get an answer within, within a day.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, any additional follow-up questions from the board? Not so quick, Jeff.
Yeah, I know we brought up in the past the feasibility of an entrance on County Street to the development, and you've brought that up, did we ever bring up a temporary construction entrance, just during the construction phase, WVA, construction vehicle concerns? I don't remember calling that out specifically.
To clarify, are you looking to ask if it's a temporary construction site entrance on County Street, or just a separate one on Freetown Street? Would you consider a separate construction entrance on County Street until the development is, well, not finished, but at least occupied?
Mr. Chairman, my client indicates that they would explore that as a possibility.
Okay, there you go, they're going to explore it, and we'll make sure we follow up with you, get an answer. Any other questions from anyone else on the board at this point? So my question to the petitioner at this point is, do you have any additional questions or concerns or clarification from any of us up here, or from Jeff as to what he's looking for, so we can be well-prepared for that October meeting?
No, we do not.
Do you have any type of timeframe when you're going to do that traffic study? And the reason I'm asking is because we'd like to have it done sooner rather than later, we know we have to wait till the schools open, but we'd also like Jeff to be able to get the results of that prior to the October meeting, so we can actually get some work done at that meeting.
Well, we'd definitely do it once school opens, it's generally not a good idea to do it in the first week that they open, but certainly right after that. We'll try to get it as quickly as possible so you can react in time for the October meeting.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, thank you, I don't know if you had any water down there or not, okay, good. All right, it's tight quarters up here in case people didn't notice, so. Yeah, so we are going to be, Amy just reminded me, just to give everyone a heads up, we, we are looking into moving back to the, to the library, hopefully, I'm not going to regret that, only because I know there are some other meetings coming up that other folks in town are looking to use this for, and I've been asked on, on a number of occasions how long we're going to continue to use the auditorium, so, and we will be more prepared with overflow rooms and whatnot there, if, if we do decide to go back, so just to give everyone a heads up on that. Question for the petitioner, what are you ready to present to us at our next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, as we've mentioned previously, we have engaged the services of Public Archaeological Laboratory, PAL, to perform an archaeological study. They have studied the project, they've actually walked the site with an archaeologist from the Wampanoag Tribe, and I believe they've identified some sensitive areas, and we will be prepared to, they will be prepared to attend the meeting in September to give a full report at that time, so we'd like to have that on the agenda, archaeological and Wampanoag Tribe issues.
Okay, so the September meeting can be focused on archaeological, Native American impact, and then within the next couple of meetings, obviously, we'll revisit traffic and start engineering review at subsequent meetings between October and November, is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay, that good with everyone on the board at this point? Okay.
Excuse me, can I have just one comment on that?
We're talking about what we're going to discuss at the next meeting.
For September, and, and I just want to make a quote that I've received from Deborah Cox at, at Public Archaeology Lab.
Hang on, if you're going to talk anything about it, we can't do it at this point. You're, you're going to have ample opportunity, I'll tell you what, you remind me in September, you'll be the first person who can get up at the mic, but I honestly, to make sure we, we don't, to make, to make sure we follow proper protocol, Amy, can I take questions or any comments on anything to do with archaeological or Native American at this point?
No, you did announce that it would be traffic.
Okay, yeah, we only announced traffic, so that's why I can't take it, I got to listen to council.
I just talked about the traffic.
Do, okay, so the, the other agenda item we have is meeting minutes from our May sixteenth meeting that need to be approved, is anyone up for making a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Jerry made the motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
Anthony made the second, any further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous motion carries, our next meeting, we have a regular zoning board meeting on August fifteenth later this week, for those who are listening and those on LakeCam, that will actually be a remote meeting, so we will not be holding it at the library, and our subsequent meeting, hang on. All right, so we are still going to have the September meeting at the, at the school on September ninth. Do we have any, actually, we don't have any other business to come before, so, right, so I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until September ninth, seven o'clock back here at the high school auditorium.
So may.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Who wants it? I'm going to give it to Sheedy this time, he has the second, so Anthony got the last one. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, meeting is adjourned at nine-twenty-seven, thank you.